Getting vaccines, using common sense with masks and social distancing. I ask you to look over and protect everyone who lives here, who visits here, and especially those who serve us in public safety and the military risking their lives to save others. Lord, we lost a great public servant in our Public Works Department, Joe Ankrum, a 20-year city employee. Just look over and please, Lord, look over and check his wife, Teresa, and their family for their loss. Join me for a moment of silence for our brother Joe. Thank you. Help and guide us tonight as we tackle some of these challenges and making the right decisions that will take us forward into the future for generations. I rest in peace knowing that you always are looking over me and have our back. Amen. Please do me as I say, let's allegiance. Let's allegiance. Since Nicole is not with us tonight, we have a very talented city clerk slash city administrator slash this slash that.
I'll try my best. How about that? Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Streedman?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda are citizens' comments. We only have one person signed up, but I see more in the audience, so I'm going to allow others to speak who have not signed up if they care to. First up is Jay Lambeth. Let's hear it on Alapans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for the contraption. I encountered an immovable object that sort of dumped me on my backside. Well, I appreciate it. I want to take just a few minutes. Basically, I came to thank and to praise. Right now, we're at 3501 Hartnett. We are not permanent residents of Alapans, but we have been coming here for every year for 40 years, almost 40 years, 38 to be precise. And several things I wanted to comment, if I could delve you just a moment. First thing I want to thank the mayor. I think it was the summer of your first year in office, and I stopped by here to just to see if I could meet you. And you weren't here, but they called you and you came from wherever you were to meet with me and my wife and spend a good bit of time with us explaining things about the island. That was very, very gracious, and we appreciate that more than you know. Also had a chance to meet Desiree that day. She was still had the interim tag, but obviously wanted the permanent job very much. So she was very gracious also, and I appreciate that. I'm glad that you made the decision to make her the permanent administrator. In fact, I called him, Mr. Moy, I don't, you probably don't remember, but I called you and thanked you as Chair of Personnel for making that recommendation to the council. Mr. Mayor, I understand you are not running for reelection, but I'm sure that Mr. Pounds or Dr. Buchanan, either one are very capable of carrying on. Mr. Moy, you're not running for reelection. And the last information I had, Mr. Bell and Mrs. Smith, you hadn't decided. But there are, what, six people running, so I'm sure the council will continue in good hands. I study very carefully every video of every council meeting and many of the committee meetings as well to keep up with what's going on here, because we consider this really our second home since, like I say, every year for almost 40 years. So I feel like I'm up to speed on many of the issues that you're dealing with. The Marina, the dock project, watercraft, the lease eviction issues that you're dealing with, parking, and I want to say that I think parking on Palm Boulevard is much, much better now. I certainly commend you for that, no question. I agree with Mr. Bell that speed on 41st has been a real concern, and I see that you have put up the four-way stop signs that you talked about and certainly hope that that's going to help. I could go on, but I won't take any more of your time. But again, thank you so much for all you're doing. I just wanted you to know how much we love the Alapans.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Dana, you talk to me first. Will you come up? I'm sorry, I'll put you next.
I'm going to do what you did, touch this down, because I can't hear myself when I talk around. Mayor, council members, audience staff, residents. I'm Dana Love. My wife and I, Beatrice, live at 9 San Dollar Drive. I'm here to speak about the noise ordinance. We've had a problem at our house for many years. My rental house behind us, it has a swimming pool. It's almost like you're living in a motel and you open your back door and there's the swimming pool for the motel. It's rented out virtually every week in the summer. And we certainly don't mind people having fun, but fun, their fun ends when it affects me according to the noise ordinance. I've studied the noise ordinance, read it several times, and with my legal background, which is almost zero, it seems like the noise ordinance was written to be unenforceable. And I say that for this reason. The term reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities appears in the ordinance six times unless I've left one of them out somewhere. And the question in my mind is who is a person of reasonable ordinary sensibilities? Well, the ordinance doesn't say that. In any particular situation where it arises, you generally got three people. You've got people who are complaining like we do. So nobody could accuse us of being reasonable and with ordinary sensibilities. It's not the people that are renting. They don't have any idea that somebody is complaining about them until a police show up. So you can't really call them people with reasonable ordinary sensibilities. This leaves only the police, who are usually biased on the side of the renters. I do not intend to disparage our police. We have a great police force. We have many first-class police officers on the island. But let me give you some of the quotes given to me by several officers over the last span of years. Number one, the noise is not inconsistent with noise from a rental in mid-afternoon. Pardon my French. What the hell does that mean? Now, the officer apparently only did a drive-by. He didn't speak with the renters, and although we requested that he come to our house, he called me on the phone and told me that. I've also had at least one police officer tell me, "We're here to stop real crime, not homeowner association issues." I'll just let that one go as it is. I asked an officer to have them turn the radio off. He said, "No." I said, "Can you at least have them turn it down?" He says, "Well, I guess I can go over and ask." He had no intention of speaking to the renters until I asked him to do that. I made a comment to an officer that as a resident, I was paying his salary. He said the renters were paying more than I was. Is this what the cause is? That's how it seems to me. We were told by the police to have the patrolman come into our home so that they can hear what we are hearing. The first response from the patrolman is, "We can't come in." I've usually been able to convince them to please come in and hear what I'm hearing. We also get this from the dispatcher. The patrolman can't come into your house. Now, where does that leave us? Section B of the ordinance says, "In such a manner to be plainly audible in any adjacent dwelling or other residence." Section C says, "Disturb the quiet comfort or repose of any dwelling or other residence." We get down to the part of the ordinance that says violations and penalties. What is a valid violation? Who determines this? We're never told unless we ask, and then we don't always get an answer. And any violations can a property accrue before something happens? Who makes these rules? That's not in the ordinance anywhere. In closing, I would like to mention the fact that in these things that I just read, I did not read the part that says, again, reasonable person I can't even, of ordinary sensibilities, is what I get from typing myself. The phrase, should, that phrase should be replaced by "a law enforcement officer of the city of Alapans." That's my suggestion to you. Change the ordinance to specify who enforces the ordinance, not some reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities, because nobody knows who that person is. The rental property in question is the only rental in the middle of an interior residential area. It's not front beach. We feel like, again, we're living in a room off the swimming pool in the motel. The distance of our pool, the pool we're talking about, is just about the distance from that wall to that wall. The only people on the island who have power, responsibility, and ability to make and change the rules are you. We ask that you even the playing field so that the residents have a fair chance. I have another request I'd like to make, and I'd like to address it to the city attorney.
Dan, we've got three minutes, so if you make it quick.
I can make it very quick. I would like to see the city attorney be able to mold the ordinance so that there is some identifiable noise level that can be enforced. We have, for example, we have something to identify a speaker. Have something to identify a person driving intoxicated. Why can't we have something to identify a person making excessive noise? I would like to suggest that this be worked into it somehow. If I am in your neighborhood making enough noise over the period of an afternoon so that you can hear it in your house, that's too much noise. You should be in your house not having people interrupt you just because they're renting and feel like they can do anything they want. I thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Good to see all of you. And I'm available anytime to discuss this with anyone. We would just like some relief. That's all. Just relief. Thank you.
Yes, sir. How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I would like to thank you for all your hard work. I know that you've got a thankless job, but I want to say some great thanks. All right? This year, I really want, well, I'm Frank Hines. I live at 624 Carolina, right down here. And I want to thank y'all. I want to thank the council. I want to thank the recreation committee. I want to thank Norma Jean for allowing us to have the surf camp this year hosted by Salt Marsh Surfing Company. My granddaughter was enrolled. She had a great time except the second day when she got up and said she couldn't move. It is surprising how many muscles she used when you get that. She'd never been on a surfboard before. She had a great time. The instructor, Philip Antman, and his staff of Jennifer and Luke were up there. They got everybody up on the first day. They had a great time. They enjoyed it. They had the beach instructions. Then they went out in the water. They got everybody up. They had a great time. They were good with little kids, I mean, little kids, teenagers. They did everything. One day, though, it was raining, which they went out and surfed, because I'm a wet. All right? And then all of a sudden, there's thunder. He gathered up everybody, took them out of the water, got them off the beach, and he did the right thing. It was a wonderful experience. My granddaughter loved it. I appreciate y'all, Norma Jean, the council, the rec council, all helping us out, and I hope that next year y'all can do this again. I brought pictures. I don't know if I can pass them out.
Sure, you can.
All right, but I think I won't show them.
Frank, did you sign up for the surf camp?
I
Did you sign up for the surf camp?
No, but I tried her surfboard, and let me tell you, it was not.
Thank you very much.
I don't want them to put that on YouTube.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
So my name is Ellen Oplow. I live on Forest Trail. And I'm here on behalf of some beach walkers, morning beach walkers, who have encountered a lot of coyotes lately. That one story was just recently, a woman, or a guy, actually, four coyotes surrounded him and his dog. So it seems like the frequency, the fearlessness, they're here and there, which we know that, but they seem to be a little more aggressive and don't have the fear that they should have of human beings. So we're asking, we'll be asking Desiree to help us gather information on sightings, where they are. I know this has been an island issue for decades, I don't know, a long time. I know maybe four or five years ago, it was a really big problem. You guys did some trapping, I believe, and so forth and so on. So we're really here to get started, to try to see what we can do about this issue, to bring the fear back into them. Of course, some people would like to see them off of the island. You know, I guess we need to be practical, reasonable, but we are starting to have a lot of fear from the beach walkers in the mornings. And we all know about the woman and the dog that got, literally got attacked. And we do know about that dog that, so you'll probably be hearing from us some more. And I know Desiree will be very helpful. So that being negative, now the positive, you guys are doing a great job. I know it's been a rough year, and thank you for your hard work. We'll be talking to you more about coyotes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Hello. I'm Michael with Tideway Water Sports. Well, I know some of you are probably cringing because I'm up here. I'm here to defend Jimmy Ward for all that he's done, but I'm also here to talk about what's brought us here. You know, what's brought me here, what's brought our situation. Y'all are very, very aware of it. You know, this got ugly, and, you know, I fear that with the fire department thing going on, it could get ugly as well. And I'm just going to try to give you all a little advice on, you know, what happened with us from my perspective, you know? Had you all been open, honest, transparent, really transparent, and let us know what was going on, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't make, Mr. Halverson, pardon, really rich off of all this. It never had to get here, you know? There was a lot of cloak and dagger. There was a lot of, you know, we were made very unaware of a lot of things going on until we had to be not nice and dig. So I'm suggesting when you guys are dealing with the fire department, don't make that same mistake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, moving on. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have seven items.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before you all take a vote, I just wanted to report that the the 3E, the contractor Davis employed for a comprehensive island-wide drainage master plan has been also recommended by the planning commission at their meeting yesterday.
Great. Thank you very much. Unless y'all want to hear me read, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion here and then? All, roll call, please.
Right. Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streedman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
And Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passed?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the motion. Moving on, Ways and Means Committee. First up is Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, if you'll put up June financial results, we'll run through those fairly quickly. Mayor, we will pick up some time tonight. Everything on Ways and Means was on the consent agenda, so it'll be a quick report.
So is your report.
Not that quick. Hang on. Hold on.
I made you lose train of thought. I apologize.
That's all right. I was just going to let Amy get it up on the screen before we went any further.
You're getting there.
Here we go.
Amy is another one of our very talented, multitasking city employees.
Thank you, Amy. So you can see, this is June 30, so the end of our fiscal year, and we're not quite through closing out the books yet. We've got the audit going on as we speak. You can see revenues are in the top left corner, 22.2 million roughly. Revenue still to come in are local option sales tax, insurance license fees, and the county accommodations tax pass-through, which was approved by the county council in July. So we should, in the year, with about 23 million, a little bit over 23 million in revenue, which is about 4.8 million ahead of our budget, which is great. Year-to-date expenditures, as you can see on the top right, is 19.3 million, just under 19.4. So about 5 million under budget, and most of that is due to savings on the public safety building, delays, and other spending that will fold over into fiscal '22. So all in all, just a really good year. General fund, we will, revenue will exceed expenses by about 2.3 million, rough numbers. We'll have about $2 million that will transfer into our capital projects fund for future projects. Again, the audit is going on, hopefully be wrapped up in the relatively near future. City has about 25 and a half million in cash, and about 13 million of that is unrestricted, and you can see where those are there. So about 7.3 million is in restricted funds, tourism, beach preservation, about 5 million in unspent bond proceeds. So Amy, if you'll flip to July real quick, not much to say here. So July is first month of our fiscal year, and most of our revenues are accrued back to June for that. So there's not much to report here. 650,000 in revenue and about 800,000 in expense. So any questions on financial results? Yes, sir?
You said that 200,000 in the general fund and the remainder to the capital projects fund. But we just passed through the agenda, I believe, with the consent intent about putting an extra $50,000 aside for legislative consultants.
Right. I thought I said 2 million into the capital projects fund only in the Russell State. Yeah, Russell State in general.
Just to make sure Susan know we're on that.
Yeah. Thank you, Jimmy. Yep. Other questions on, the only other item from our Ways and Means meeting that was on Tuesday, August 17th, we had a presentation from Davis and Floyd about the drainage master plan. We just approved that from a line item, but it's a good presentation for residents in the Ways and Means package video that you can see. I think the only other item, Mayor, is our next meeting will be September 21st at 6:00 PM. That's it.
That's a great report. I hear any questions?
Hearing none. Moving on. Public safety, no meeting in August. You went, Public Works?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Committee met 4:30 PM Wednesday, August 4th. Get right to it. Department reports. Assistant Director reported that ease of an inexpensive cleaning on Forest Trail basin starting at the outfall of Waterway Boulevard and working about 32nd Avenue. The cleanup should be completed next week. SCDOT will return next week to repair for a second time a sinkhole that keeps developing on 21st Avenue. Director Pitt spoke about an ongoing and growing problem of improper trash disposal at the compactor on Front Beach. It's a real mess down there, and he reported they had to increase dumpster collection twice a week for the summer. So we'll get an update on that on our next meeting, but it's a real problem right now. Update on Phase 3 drainage projects, small internal projects, Waterway Boulevard, town elevation. Administrator reported that two critical area permits for Forest Trail Outfall have been received. This place, two, first two outfall projects will be ready to go out next month or two. Update on how and why drainage master plan, RFP. There was reported that Planning Commission narrowed down to five submissions for drainage master plan and entering three companies. Discussion of potential solutions to drainage ditch erosion issues. Director Kerr said that staff have been working on guidelines for those homeowners with which to make improvements to drains and dishes on their property. He said, "We have made an advisory cover sheet that explains the process if anybody wants to do it. We have a sketch of how to do just that, that Thomas Pope created." Update on environmental advisory committee. Administrator reported Personnel Committee will discuss further. 27 applicants received for the environmental advisory committee after August 17th meeting. And I'm sure Councilmember Moy will have an update for us later on. New business, discussion of yard debris collection operation challenges with the change of route. Beast Ferry, I've talked all night about this, but brief, it was a real, real problem. It was, for some reason, we were having to take the debris all the way to, was it Beast Ferry, right? Yeah, it was like a three-hour, three-and-a-half-hour turnaround. And it was really causing a lot of problems. I'd like to thank the mayor, I'd like to thank the administrator, and the county councilman, Dickie Swears, had got to the right people and got that thing resolved within like 36 hours, I believe. So it's resolved, if I'm correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Moving on, almost through here, discussion of existing temp agency outsourcing agreement for haulers. Director said staff zone, the temp agency, the city used to hire slingers each week. Slingers are guys on the back of the truck, has a cost share option for its workers, allowing them to purchase health insurance. Discussion of golf cart path along Ocean Park Plaza. It's a complicated issue. Anytime that you're, you know, you're talking about right-ofways and and the challenge in this one is that the path, as we call it, a golf cart path, that's on that side of Palm Boulevard, is that it's not technically a golf cart path. We have to go through DOT, it's going to require that we submit an encroachment permit. Another option would be for SCDOT to issue a quick claim. Another option would be for SCDOT to issue a quick claim to the city for a section of right of way. I've requested, um, the chair of the committee to keep this issue on the agenda as I always do with all the projects that I'm really interested until we have a resolution or completion. The next meeting, Public Works Committee, will Wednesday, September 8th at 4:30. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of comments. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor and everybody who reached out to our county councilman to rectify the situation so that we were able to send our, our public works could be going in the right direction and not wasting valuable time. So thank you for that. And, um, and also in terms of what, uh, Councilmember Ward was just mentioning about the golf cart path, I experienced firsthand and have to say, uh, I had an awkward moment where I had some supplies fall out of my golf cart as I was making that awkward dip into the shopping center and the mayor assisted me. So I appreciate that. Uh, he happened to, by coincidence, be right there to help me grab those buckets before they became a traffic issue. So, so thank you for that.
Right?
Yes, I was just trying to pull it up. Um, and I brought this up previously and have to pull it back up again, Jimmy, but I know the state law changed this year in allowing golf carts to operate on the side of the road as long as they were more than, um, so many feet off the road or the road had a curb on it. So I'll be, I can't pull it up right now in front of me, but I'll, I'll pull it up and send it to you.
Thank you. I'd like to say one quick thing. Um, our public works department, um, we're understaffed right now. And I can't tell you how many times I've seen Director Donnie Pitts and his assistant, Robert Cerro, driving the trash trucks or driving the equipment, working on jobs they don't normally do. So I thank y'all for jumping in there and filling in and keeping us all clean. Thank you very much. Moving on, recreation. They had no meeting in August. Personnel committee, Mr. Moy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The personnel committee met, um, on, at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, August the 17th. All committee members, uh, were present along with, uh, staff, administrator for Goso and HR Officer Lad. Um, we did not have any citizen comments and kicked things off with an update on the wage and compensation analysis. We've made great headway. Um, we were happy with the report from staff um, and the, the synthesis of data that the consultant kind of had processed and brought several options and recommendations to staff that we kind of discussed a little bit and, um, number one, I, I, I think we all on committee felt like we addressed the concerns of staff, particularly in public safety in terms of creating consistency and regularity that would live above and beyond any elected body, which was one of the key things that we wanted to address with this, this compensation study. So that there was a great deal of certainty from, from those staff members as to how compensation would change over years and progress. Obviously, we care about the entirety of the staff, of all of our government workers. Public safety happens to make up the lion's share of that from a quantity perspective. And there are some kind of standards in place across the country that we feel very strongly that we're aligned with those standards. Um, and so in principle, we have some recommendations in terms of how compensation progresses throughout one's tenure and career with the city. Um, from a numeric standpoint, in terms of adjusting compensation and base pay ranges, all of those types of things. Um, our committee did not feel like that was our bailiwick, so to speak, um, and felt like that, you know, really needed to be discussed in ways and means um, as a budgetary discussion. And so, uh, we sort of, um, we don't have a, a formal motion for this body to consider. Um, but in ways and means, in September, we will be discussing specific amounts. Um, there's a lot of options in terms of how we can start making our wages more competitive and start ensuring that, continue ensuring that every member of our, um, of our staff is, is fairly and attractively compensated. So, um, I know there's not a ton of specifics here, but essentially we have a, um, I'll, I'll try to sum it up. It does rate. Please help me if I, if I misspeak. Um, but the idea is a step increase based on tenure um, that allows for, um, additional step increases based on, based on exceptional performance. So we are rewarding high, the highest performing employees while giving some consistency and regularity to the way that wages are increased. Okay? Um, I'm gonna pause because that's a big one and see if there's any questions on that. I know we're gonna discuss in ways and means in much more depth in the September meeting, uh, but that was the big one. Obviously, that's one of the, probably the primary driver of us taking on the compensation, uh, analysis was addressing public safety.
Do we have any questions on this? Mr. Moy, if you don't mind me asking one question, I've watched Mount Pleasant or their fire department talking about wages. How do we stack up overall, this holistic? Are we far behind, slightly behind?
What, uh, we haven't, we haven't seen that specific data in terms of, here's your market position. So I, I don't know.
Okay.
Desiree, you might be able to speak to that. I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, it depends what position we're, we're talking about. We have different positions within the department, but that's certainly something that the consultants have been looking at, looking at the market and what the position would pay and, um, a recommendation of how we can stay competitive.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. I'll keep on going. Um, the next item was the consideration of the applications for an environmental advisory committee. And in this, we were both blessed and cursed. Blessed that our, uh, community is filled with so many incredibly experienced, really smart people with lots of letters behind their names. And, uh, we had 27 applicants, a lot of folks with masters and higher degrees in environmental and, um, public health science. So, um, we, we, we had the challenge of, um, finding the, the nine most qualified. Um, we do have, uh, an action item on the agenda, uh, coming out of, of committee. We did make a motion to select nine individuals. I, we could probably fill up a couple of hours talking about how qualified each of them are, um, in your, or the applicant, the applications aren't in this packet, are they? They were in a previous packet.
Correct. The applications are not included in the packet. They're the list of the nine members that have been recommended on.
So I'm, I'm just gonna give a quick kind of overview of the committee. This is a nine-person committee. Um, and just for the sake of public and for the record, I'm gonna restate the purpose of the environmental advisory committee um, that was formed by the public works committee. And I think, uh, Councilwoman Smith really took the lead on that, so credit to her. This is really exciting. Obviously, a ton of community engagement. This is a needed, highly valuable committee coming out of, um, of this council. City council formed the environmental advisory committee to advise city council on matters of environmental impact, protections, conservation, and sustainability by exploring innovations, best practices, and data around changes. The environmental advisory committee may address matters as requested by city council and its committees and on its own accord, take up issues and initiatives that fit within its mission with regular reporting to council. The goals of this committee are to protect the environment, endangered species, species and natural resources, reduce litter and pollution, pursue energy conservation, develop environmental messaging and branding to promote best practices, support Isle of Palms as a strong environmental leader in South Carolina and model for other coastal communities, and develop and support partnerships with related community groups and stakeholders. So I, I think we've got some really lofty goals. We've got some high expectations of this group. Um, we, um, on the recommendation of Councilmember Ward, I think was very wise that we ensure that we reserve a spot for a college student and a, a high school student. We had one college student apply, so, um, I, my first motion would be for Grace Trigella. I don't know if I pronounced that right. Somebody knows her. For, uh, the one-year term, the students have one-year terms. And for high school student, we had three applicants apply. Um, again, all incredibly talented, uh, folks. One stood above in terms of her experience, Molly Moreno. Um, and then the other folks were staggering terms. Um, so I'm gonna read out the three-year appointments. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we appoint Sandra Brotherton, Doug Hatler, Belvin Olisov, and Mary Pringle to three-year terms, and Deb Fairs, Jonathan, uh, Nock, and Linda Plunkett to two-year terms.
One second. Any special?
I'll just, thank you very much for the, for the work that was put in. You are, um, can't overstate like the degree of expertise that is coming to this committee and, uh, it's just a wonderful thing. And I hope that those who in this moment aren't gonna be joining the committee potentially could be joining in the future and that we just try to, um, that this committee could maybe find ways for them to be engaged. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, let me reiterate too, that there was a lot of talented people on that list. I mean, the list of 27, there really were no losers on there. I mean, you could have chosen many people from that list and I just would encourage those that have an opportunity to apply again when an opening comes up for that committee or any other committee we may have. Uh, they should certainly do so. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I add one word to that? And they could also apply for counsel. Sorry, I had to throw that in there.
I, I do wanna make an announcement. So boards and commissions, we have several vacancies that are expiring at the end of this year. We have four in the planning commission, two in Boza, and two in the Court of Board of Appeals. And we haven't received an overwhelming response of applications. So I do encourage folks that are interested in getting their feet wet with, with local government to apply for those. That, that line is April, um, August 30th.
It's gonna let her out to them. Okay.
Okay.
There's a motion and, um, a roll call. Councilmember Towns?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Moyn?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Very much.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, that, that concluded old business. Uh, we moved on to new business, starting with the, um, discussion and considerations for the Leola Handberry Award. Um, we're gonna pick this up in executive session. We like to give this award out at the employee appreciation event and we like it to kind of be a surprise. And so we will make this nomination in executive session, uh, later on tonight.
Could we, before we go that far, at least let our audience and YouTube viewers know what that award is about.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I don't have the specific language right here in front of me because it's pretty good. Uh, but the Leola Handberry Award is, oh, you got me?
Got you covered.
Got your back. Yeah. That's how we do. That's how we do in Isle of Palms. Um, the Leola Handberry Award is, um, for, uh, first all made possible by a former, uh, city council person who, um, upon her, her passing, left an endowment to the city for the sake of, uh, celebrating and honoring and recognizing, um, superior service from, uh, city staff. Uh, so the, uh, the award may be given annually to one employee displaying exemplary service going above and beyond normal job requirements and expectations, demonstrated integrity, and a strong commitment to the city of Isle of Palms. Um, award selection criteria, exemplary achievement and performance consistently and substantially exceeds the expectations of the position, performing at a level above and beyond normal job requirements and expectations, has made important and significant contributions in their area, contributes and demonstrates commitment to the city of Isle of Palms, excellence in customer service and personal interaction, consistently and substantially demonstrates an ability and willingness to work positively, respectfully, and effectively with others, has significantly improved customer service, or has increased citizen satisfaction in their area, demonstrates ability and willingness to manage changes and work priorities, procedures, and organization, demonstrates exceptional ability to foster collaboration, communication, and cooperation among colleagues and members of the Isle of Palms community. And finally, development of an innovative and creative idea that improves quality of service and reduces costs. Yeah, thank you. Uh, from there, we moved on to, uh, as the city administrator pointed out, a discussion of the upcoming vacancies and boards and commissions. And, um, I would, uh, encourage, uh, city staff to reach out to everybody who was not nominated for an opening who has expressed interest in the environmental advisory committee that they consider seeking one of those seats. Um, good, good call, Mr. Mayor. And so, uh, I know, in terms of, of that discussion, there was some discussion in terms of, uh, the, the way in which we handle reappointments. Um, and I'll, I'll make this, uh, we, we've stated this publicly before, but it probably bears, uh, repeating every year that we have these, these processes. Several years ago, the, the understanding was that once you were appointed to a commission, it was a lifetime appointment. And if you raised your hand and said, "I just wanna keep serving," that the personnel committee would, would simply say, "Okay, if you wanted, it's yours." And there wasn't really any kind of reevaluation process in place. And so, uh, a few years ago, we put into place a little bit of a, let's, let's make it, give an opportunity for the rest of the committee, the community to apply for these positions because there was a, a sense of disengagement from the community that, hey, this is a lifetime appointment. How can I serve on planning commission? How can I serve on, uh, Boza? How can I serve on any ATAX or any of these other committees? And so we, we started a policy that, you know, if you want, if you were nominated and appointed, uh, that you could serve for two years, two terms, excuse me, two terms consecutively under that, under that kind of model. After that, you would need to reapply and, and kind of be put on the same playing field of, of interviews as everyone else. Um, so we discussed that and, and basically decided that we wanted to continue doing that. That's the discussion we had. Um, I'll move on. Uh, discussion of RFP for the municipal judge, city prosecutor, and public defender. Uh, historically, we have not, um, taken these positions to RFP and our committee discussed, um, directing staff to, um, take this to RFP consistent with our, our process for appointing the city prosecutor, or the city attorney, excuse me. And, uh, there was no motion, no, no action needed by this body for, for that. And finally, yeah, we had, uh, executive session for those matters and, uh, we have our next meeting Tuesday, September the 14th. So end my, my report.
Great point. We have any questions? Hearing none. Going on to always a fun report, Real Property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging it as a fun report. Uh, we had a real property meeting at 1:30 PM, Monday, August 2nd. All council members were present, uh, that are on the committee, Moy, Popson, and myself. We also had Administrator Fragoso join us as well. We had no citizens' comments. We had no Marina tenant comments. We moved on to new, old business. And, uh, under old business, we, we update the Marina Dock, uh, we update the Marina Restaurant. And, uh, you know, and that's part of our capital projects that we have. And, uh, in, in the last couple of months, uh, we've had a really good addition to the Ways and Means Committee because we have an update that is included that, uh, Desiree presents that has more current information than we have in the minutes for the Real Property Meeting. So, you know, so just real quickly here, uh, on the Marina Dock, uh, in, you know, and I, this is even dated by a week. So there's other things that have been done, but, but, uh, dock, dock area C, which is a restaurant in the face docks, punch dish inspection, uh, scheduled for week, week of, uh, 816 prior to turnover. Uh, the, the water system was not yet fully connected or tested, so that was a work in progress at that point. Fire suppression was almost complete and the on-site, on-site meeting with the fire department was pending prior to the turnover. And once that is done, then dock, the dock area B, which is the charter dock, will begin to be, uh, uh, demolished at that point. Um, and, uh, that restaurant in the face docks are fully functional for use and turned over to MJV at that time so that we can go ahead and, and work with dock area B. And then later on, of course, the final segment on that will be the dock area A, which is the fuel dock. And at that point, at, at this point here, uh, there was a meeting scheduled for week, week of 816 to discuss updated pricing and identify items to modify. Desiree, I'll refer to you. I don't know if that meeting actually happened during that week or, or if it got pushed back.
The meeting between the Marina manager?
Yeah.
No, we, we held that meeting. Um, we had an update from the dock manufacturer and the contractor.
Okay.
Um, we discussed the current design for the fuel hub. And, um, any differences there? Um, we will be discussing that a little bit more through the committee process this coming month.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Our next item was the Isle of Palms Marina Restaurant renovation. And, uh, we discussed the building update there. Again, they were wrapping up the interior wall and four framing as of last week. All the structurally unsound joists on the first floor and under the building have been repaired. Working on strapping the two-story deck and new bar and new cable rail system. The plumbing rough end was nearly complete throughout the building and electric, electrical rough end complete on the first floor. And the new fire sprinkler plans are due this past week. Um, HVAC units, uh, been ordered and ductwork installation scheduled for the end of August. And I think they've actually started some work on that based on what I observed just the other day. And construction completion date at this point is estimated for early 2022. So that's, uh, uh, where we're pushed out. At this point, there is some optimism that they could, you know, finish a little earlier. But, uh, but early 2020, 2022 is, uh, what we're looking at now. And of course, parking lot improvement, staff, staff is working with the contractor to finalize a schedule for the, uh, parking lot improvements in that area. Target window is, uh, beginning this past week through September the 20th. So, Desiree, if you've got any update on that, welcome to, to give that, or are we just still waiting for a final on that?
Um, the contractor has been Um, the contractor has confirmed that the work will begin September first.
All right.
Yeah, just wanted the residents to know that we have hired a third party. Insight group to watch on our behalf, the city, the contractor as he, you know, builds the the restaurant. So we stay out of trouble and get a good building.
Yep.
Just wanted to mention that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Popson, that's a good bring up there, too, and that's really helpful. Another item under old business update on the proposed public dock and green space at the Isle Palm Marina Marina. And the project remains on hold in the case where the holdover tenant is adjudicated. We did have a motion, an order for summary judgment that was issued August the twentieth. And we're now in a thirty-day or so appeal process. Timeframe here, so we'll just see how that goes later on and what happens there. And we had an update on ADA beach access improvements. We, as of our meeting on August the second. Administrator Fregoso said it would be another three to four weeks before we could have the thirty-four A beach access properly surveyed. And I guess that's a work in progress right now.
I believe the survey has been completed.
Oh, okay, great. That's a good update there. And and she'd also been working with the public works department on a more consistent and deliberate maintenance schedule for the beach access pass. Include a Moby Mat. And we've also been doing some work. With one of our really concerned citizens who gets really involved, Dr. James Spiley, has been working with OCRM with some communication. And we all had kind of a lot of communication going to talk about Moby Mat and how we may be able to extend that. More seaward than what it is now. We're real optimistic that we might have some, hopefully some good news on that coming forward. I know OCRM. Did have a meeting. They're looking into it from a legal standpoint and we hope to, we hope to hear some good news on that. We also have Councilmember Joe Bustos involved in that effort. I know I've had a couple of conversations and at least one meeting with him. That was one of the subjects that we talked about. And so we 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 hope to get some pretty good news going forward there. And then we also had a challenge as a committee. We we asked. The city administration to exhaust every avenue they could to try to make our beach more ADA accessible and accommodating. That could include things like the big wheelchair, big wheel wheelchairs. And some other things that we might be able to do that would make it more accommodating for people that that need that ADA assistance. And let's see, under new business, we had discussions, discussion consideration, property insurance options for the new Marina docks. And I think we dealt with that with consent agenda tonight. So that's done. And under miscellaneous business, the next meeting of the real property committee will be held on Monday, September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. At one thirty PM. So is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great report. Do we have any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment on the ADA beach access. The the biggest challenge we have for creating access to the beach is the soft sand. And current OCRM guidelines prohibit us from extending the Moby Mats beyond where they currently go. So there's a huge section of soft sand. And just I I I realize I might be restating some stuff, but that is, that is the biggest obstacle we we face in terms of helping. Folks that would would need assistance getting to the beach. And so the biggest thing that we can do is. Is not necessarily create more boardwalks, although that's certainly helpful. The biggest thing that we can do to create more access is actually to push OCRM to change their ordinances and policies. And so we're, that's what, that's what we're trying to do. I don't know, Desiree, if you had additional thoughts on on potentially passing a resolution to try to encourage OCRM. To reevaluate and change. That was one of the things that came up in discussion in our committee was what can we do other than obviously making phone calls, reaching out to. Representative Bustos and others. So I guess I I will make that in the form of a question.
Form of a motion?
A question. Sorry.
We will be presenting a draft resolution to the real property committee next month for recommendation to council. Your next regular meeting.
I think it would also be nice, Desiree, if we sent maybe a thank you letter or something to Matt Slagle with OCRM for acknowledging the Moby Mat. Request that we had and just really encourage him, you know, him and thanking him for his involvement in that.
And I received an update from Mr. Slagle. They had a meeting with leadership at OCRM and they have been discussing our request and I should be receiving an update fairly soon. With those decisions and I'll certainly share that with all of you when I do.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me saying, you know, I'd like to have a lot of kudos to like the Marker one sixteen family group. They got into something that was a lot of surprises to them. They came into it at a time when we have COVID. And then tremendous price increases. I like kudos to council or negotiating a lease that was done properly, triple net. Kudos to our city administrator and legal staff who put this lease together. And there's been a lot of surprises down there, but I commend them. For the job that they're doing and for your standing on top of it and watching it going along there. It is moving along and I can't wait till it opens. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in July. Planning Commission meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, no minutes available yet. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Reports from special joint committees, none. Petitions received, deferred, disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven. In ordinance to alter the hiring process for department heads. Desiree, you want to give us a brief overview of this? Before we go forward?
Sure. So what the the ordinance that you have in front of you for consideration for first, second reading. Would change the current process that is spelled out in the code by which city council participates in the selection of department heads. The code currently states that the personnel personnel committee acts as the hiring committee. chaired by the chair of the personnel committee and then makes a recommendation to city council for appointments. This process would be altered in that the city administrator would make a recommendation to city council for appointment. So as a council form of government, city council still has the final authority in any approvals of any department head position, including the city administrator. The only difference would be that the administrator would take on the assessment of the candidates and then bring forward. Some recommendations for for the policy setting body to to consider.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion?
Still moving.
Second.
Again, this is a second reading. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
So who made the motion? Councilmember Bell and second advice, Moy.
Sorry, Desiree, I'm moving along there and you're doing twenty things at one time. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I strongly recommend that we that we take this on and approve this. I've I've been a, I've been a believer. For many months now that we ought to have this kind of process in place. That the city administrator. You know, being, you know, reporting into council as she does, that but but her department is that report directly to her should be. Her recommendations come into council and then us vote on those recommendations either up or down. If we don't agree, it goes back to the city administrator. To bring another candidate in. If we do, if we do agree, we pass and the majority carries. So I'm just. I'm I'm a strong, I'm in strong agreement that the administrator reviews, recommends intended appointments for. City department heads and I'm certain that she will put a panel in place to help identify the technical skills needed for any department manager. That he or she as city administrator would hire. So that's my point.
Anyone else? Here and done.
Well, I I guess my question is. Where's the committee level in all of this? So if we're looking for a new. Head of recreation, Norvigeon, you're not going anywhere. I just, I'm just throwing it out. Or Public Works. I'm struggling why this wouldn't go through the committee. Desiree makes a recommendation that goes through the committee and then up to us. I think the committee is getting left out is my problem with this unless I'm missing something.
And you're talking about the subject committee that ties the recreation committee for the recreation director.
Public Works for Public Works. I think it should go through that committee after Desiree makes a recommendation. My only issue for this.
I think that's a very good point. Would you like to try to make an amendment to that motion? But this is a second reading. So.
You can, the council can entertain amendments at second reading and still ratify the ordinance.
And well, would our city administrator care to speak to that and? Your your thoughts on whether that would be an improvement in the process that's being proposed?
Well, currently, the code doesn't include any other committees in a selection process for the department head. So that would be. In addition to what we currently have in the city code, the city code only. Tasks the personnel committee as being the hiring committee. I think recently, changes have been made where other committees have been involved in that process for better or worse. And but that's not spelled out in the code. If if you all would like to make that as part of the code, that a recommendation would come. Before the particular committee first. And if if it passes the committee, if you will, it comes before city council. Certainly, that is an option that you all at the policy setting body can consider.
Just, and I understand, appreciate the point, Kevin. Without changing code, it doesn't preclude the administrator having a discussion with the respective committees, right? Personally, I don't think you need a a code change for that. Right now, I mean, you know, having personnel and other committees in the process of interviewing tens of candidates is. Really interesting when you're not an expert in any of those fields. You know, my expectation would be with the responsibility on the administrator is that she's. Certainly capable enough, if it's a discussion around recreation, to have that conversation without requiring a code change. I think what we're trying to do is shift the responsibility to the supervising organization. Some of us will remain, some of us won't, but she's got to live with those choices and put it in front of council for full support. And I'm sure if she has the support of the respective committees, she'll. She'll do a good job with it.
Do I hear anything?
No, I'm I'm coming on that. I just like the fact that I'm sure there will be discussion per committee. But still, the fact that the council still has final say in any decision. That's really it. Well, we can have a discussion with whoever's the chair of that committee can put discussion of whatever of the current, whatever position is open. But like I said, as long as the the council still has the ability to vote yea or nay on the appointment, I I don't think too much has changed except for streamlining the process.
And I think that we, in any hiring process, particularly in local government, we have to look at what the objective and the goal is with with the hiring, a new department head. And there would certainly be entertain a conversation about the attributes and what we're looking in the next department head to give me some direction. About what I'm looking for and the candidates that 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 will be recommended. So certainly enter, you know, I think it's a, it's a. Part of the part of the process that I or anybody in my position would follow as well.
Anything else? Desiree, I think.
Okay, Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Nay.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streedman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four, a resolution to encourage the use of face masks. And indoor public spaces, retail food establishments. Do I hear a motion to approve waiving the reading?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We jumped.
Backup point. We did. Oh, I am so sorry. I'm just checking things off and not looking at number nine ordinance twenty twelve, in ordinance to allow remote special meetings. In the event of an emergency. Do I hear a motion to approve with discussion or about discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Was that? Okay.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Ward and seconded by.
Streedman.
We got to help Desiree because she's doing twenty things over here.
I'm new at this.
We've got masks on too, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, may I say something on this?
Of course you may.
Okay, thank you. I brought this up a while back and asked it to be put on the agenda for this month and. And unfortunately, it seems to be timely. You know, we've got the COVID Delta variant that's out there and. You know, and a lot of uncertainty in the in the in the communities throughout the nation, throughout the world, really. What gave me this idea here basically is, you know, doing a little research and found that there are some municipalities, one in particular, I can remember, it's Aiken, South Carolina. That had put this kind of, you know, this kind of special. Ordinance in place, you know, back in February, in case there was some sort of. Emergency that came up again, that they could, you know, have their meetings remotely. And I just want to point out, too, that the way this is worded, which I really like the wording of, is that, you know, it's really for exigent. Issues only, personal emergencies, illnesses, circumstances like that. Where you just can't be here or we have to, you know, convene a special meeting or even a regular meeting because we have something else going on. Within the community that would prevent us all from getting together. As much as we can, we ought to be together in these meetings anyway, but this would just provide for that. I know that during my short time on council, the last year and a half, I've seen a few instances where we have council members that can't be here for regular. Discussions for important matters. And this would allow them, if they're in an area where they have a telephone available, even they can, they can dial in. Be part of the discussion, be part of the vote. And I think that's important for us as we make decisions based on behalf of the city and our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else? Here and done.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streedman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
And Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moy, would you watch me check that off? Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four, a resolution to encourage the use of face masks. And indoor public spaces, retail and food establishment. Again, do I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here we go. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I think the important word in this ordinance is to encourage.
While we did that. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Just a word, you know, for those that may not be keeping close. Closely tuned in to recent events, the dynamics of our situation with the Delta variant of COVID. Has has changed and I think this is. Would highly encourage, as the ordinance says, everybody to consider both wearing a mask indoors. As well as getting vaccinated if you haven't been vaccinated yet for the sake of yourself and for everyone around you, for the sake of our. Children so that they can continue to go to school in person, our college students, our healthcare workers who are. Supporting us through what is. Seemingly as dangerous a situation as we've faced in the past. So and to consider, you know, go to your, go to the public health officials at the state, local and federal level. And listen to their advice and understand how this is different than the situations we faced in the past.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I had the displeasure of bringing my eighty-eight-year-old mother-in-law to the emergency room, not COVID-related, this week. And I spoke to the attending physician. There were no rooms available in emergencies. They've been moving people from Berkeley County into Roper Hospital. And things are full. I also have a neighbor who's an anesthesiologist that has written all of council. And she said, we're in, we're in a desperate mode right now in terms of occupancy rates with ICU. And. You know, this is encouraged. We don't have the legislative authority to mandate. And I think we're, we'd be pretending if we tried to mandate these rules. But I think it's responsible for all of us to to encourage people to get their vaccinations. We've had, as as we well know, city issues. We've had, as, as we well know, city issues with employees. And we have it in the community. And as a grandparent to four under twelves, I would agree with councilmembers sitting next to me, um, let's, let's be as protective as we can.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As my mask slides down over my, there.
In the, in the resol, in the resol, gosh, got too much going on here. In the, in the resolution itself, does the wording say, um, uh, that we recommend anyone that's unvaccinated to wear the mask or does it say vaccinated or unvacc, vaccinated or unvaccinated? Is it both or is it just one or the other?
Currently, the way that the resolution is drafted, it only includes unvaccinated people.
Well, I would recommend that we might want to just add vaccinated or in, or unvaccinated. You know, just say, okay, if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, we still have a resolution in place encouraging you to wear that face mask.
How about just encourage everybody?
Yeah, well, you could, but I mean, if you want to spell it out, we got the language of the resolution that says it's spelled out unvaccinated. We say everybody, I'm fine with that also.
Or just remove the.
Yeah.
A friendly amendment to remove the word vaccinated.
Term of the word unvaccinated.
I'm sorry.
Everyone.
For that, so that it applies to everyone.
And, or just, or just copy the last resolution we passed.
And, and to that point, I think there was a, a point where many of us who were vaccinated felt like I never have to wear my mask again. But, um, it's become evident that you can have a, a case of COVID that will impact you. You can also, even if you are vaccinated and you can pass that along to other people, even if you don't have symptoms, um, if you're vaccinated. So that would be the reasoning for including both.
Just one little aside, I had an opportunity to ride down to Edisto Beach for surrounding beach mayors. And, uh, they have all done away with their outdoor dining and stuff. And I'm proud of this city for continuing to allow this more space to be spread out and meeting. So again, I commend this council. So, Desiree, I think we are.
Okay, you're ready to vote on the?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution that has a friendly amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, Councilmember Pa, uh, Pounds?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Bell?
Hi.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Hi.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Moy?
Hi.
Councilmember Streedman?
Hi.
Mr. Popsen, Councilmember Popsen?
Even though I forgot mine tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Carroll?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on miscellaneous business. Yes, sir.
Just have, um, sorry, just have one suggestion for, uh, the administrator. If we could make masks available for future meetings at the door.
We do. We have some right next to the door.
Kevin?
Shame on me.
He didn't wear his glasses as he walked in. Okay, um, our next regular meeting is six PM Tuesday, September the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. Executive session, do I hear a motion to go into executive session for three items? In accordance with South Carolina Code, section thirty-four seventy-eight-two, to receive legal advice and legal update regarding the eviction proceedings against Title II Water Sports. B, in accordance with the same section, to discuss personnel matters and applications for environment, environmental advisory committee and nominations for the Leola Hambury Award. And lastly, in accordance to discuss personnel matters related to the fire chief hiring process.
Motion to approve to go into executive session, second.
No discussion needed. Off, Desiree?
Yes, so Councilmember Streedman and Bell?
Yes, right.
Okay, um, Councilmember Pounds?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Bell?
Hi.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Hi.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Moy?
Hi.
Councilmember Streedman?
Hi.
Councilmember Popsen?
Hi.
Mayor Carroll?
Hi.
Motion pass.
All right, and just so everybody knows, no decisions are made in executive session. We talk, we receive legal advice. When we come out, if there's any decisions we made, it's made public at that time. Thank you all for coming tonight.